I would like to call this meeting to order. Ladies and gentlemen, it has been pointed out that I left the words "under God" out of the Pledge of Allegiance at the last meeting. I assure you that this was not on purpose and was probably a result of the stress of technical difficulties immediately prior to the meeting, which indeed we have already had this evening. However, I learned the pledge as a child without the words "under God" in it. I guess the stress caused me to revert to my earliest memory of the pledge. I can promise you that it will not happen again. So if you will silently follow me, I will say the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Ms. Posey, would you call the roll?
Yes, Madam Supervisor. Trustee Bassano?
Here.
Trustee Nevers?
Present.
Trustee Oliver?
Here.
Trustee Smith?
Here.
Treasurer Goodhue?
Here.
Clerk Posey, here. Supervisor Dunn?
Here.
All members are present.
Thank you. Now we have the agenda. Ms. Posey, I believe there were a couple of add-ons?
Yes, Madam Supervisor. Just a proposed add-on that's indicated on the agenda under Human Resources Department, item number 16, Authorization to Extend Offer of Employment for Building Inspector, and also under Supervisor's Office, item number 20, Request to Postpone Established Wage Scale for Full-Time Elected Officials. That's all I got.
Thank you. And I have also the number 20, the discussion of wage scale for the full-time elected officials. I would like to ask that it be postponed until later date, and this is at the request of Trustee Oliver, who would prefer to do some further review and discussion. So as a result of that, it will be removed from the agenda tonight. That's all I have. Does anyone else have any corrections or additions to the agenda?
Madam Chair, hearing none, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Motion by Ms. Posey. Seconded by Mr. Trustee Oliver to postpone the item 20 as suggested and approve the remainder of the agenda as amended. Ms. Posey, would you call the roll?
Yes, Madam Chair. Clerk Posey, yes. Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Bassano?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Treasurer Goodhue?
Yes.
And Supervisor Dunn?
Yes. That motion carries. The approval of the bills is before you tonight. As usual, there are two bills. If anyone wishes an item removed, please indicate so at this time.
Yes, Madam Chair. If there are no issues with either bill run, I move that we approve both, and this is Trustee Nevers.
Thank you. Motion by Ms. Nevers?
Supported by Treasurer Goodhue.
Seconded by Ms. Goodhue to authorize payment of both bill runs. Ms. Posey, call the roll, please.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Treasurer Goodhue?
Yes.
Trustee Bassano?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes, and Supervisor Dunn?
Yes. Thank you. That motion carries. The previous meeting minutes, those being from September 9th, are up for your approval. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the minutes?
Madam Chair, this is Treasurer Goodhue.
Madam Chair, hearing none, Clerk Posey will make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from September 9th, 2020?
Motion by Ms. Posey.
Supported by Goodhue.
Supported by Ms. Goodhue to approve the minutes from August 26th. Ms. Posey, would you call the roll?
Madam Chair, I just want to make a correction. It's approval of the meeting minutes from September 9th.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I thought that didn't sound right. September the 9th, then.
Clerk Posey, yes. Treasurer Goodhue?
Yes.
Trustee Bassano?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
And Supervisor Dunn?
Yes. The minutes are approved. The consent agenda, these are routine matters that come before the Board frequently. If anyone wishes to discuss an item, please indicate so at this time.
Madam Chair, this is Treasurer Goodhue. I'd like to approve the consent agenda items as presented.
Motion by Ms. Goodhue?
Supported by Smith.
Supported by Trustee Smith to approve the consent. Ms. Posey, would you call the roll?
Yes, Madam Supervisor. Treasurer Goodhue?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Bassano?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes. Supervisor Dunn?
Yes. Consent agenda, motion carries. Next, we have public comments. This is on agenda and non-agenda items. If you wish to speak, raise your hand, and please remember there is a three-minute time limit.
You can raise your hand by pressing star nine on your phone or using the raise hand button in the Zoom application. Frank Cusamano, go ahead.
Yes, Frank Cusamano, 16188 Jenny Drive. My public comment is on Agenda Item Number Eight. Apparently, there was a transposition of some digits. Mistakes happened, but it is a $60,000 discrepancy from what was approved in the last meeting on that agenda item for the Smart Bus Credits. I suppose the question that should be asked is what systemic correction, corrective actions being taken, possibly instituted a two-man check system, or it's two-person, rather. I don't mean politically incorrect. A two-person check system, it's embarrassing and unprofessional, and I'm sure it'll be taken care of by the competent staff at the township. Also, on Agenda Item Number Nine, reconsideration of the Conflict of Interest Policy. I didn't notice any changes to the, which is basically the same policy proposal. I will just say that the conflict of interest in the Ethics Ordinance is defined under Subparagraph One to mean a public official or employee has a pecuniary interest in the outcome of a matter currently before the township or is associated as an owner, membership, partner. And it goes into a series of disjunctive clauses. The Conflict of Interest Policy, which is being voted on by the Board, says for purpose of this policy, the term "conflict of interest" shall mean a direct pecuniary interest, present or future, real or foreseeable, which would undermine the township's goal of assuring independent, impartial, and honest bid process. Perhaps the change could be the Conflict of Interest Policy hyphen Contracts is the title, to delineate and limit that scope of that policy so there's no confusion with the Ethics Ordinance. That concludes my, oh, one last pitch for, I'm running for Board of Trustees, and I'd appreciate the consideration of all the residents of the township for my candidacy. Thank you. That concludes my comments.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak? I'm not seeing anyone, Zanet.
You're not seeing anyone, Ryan?
No.
Very well. We will then move on to unfinished business. And the first one is the correction, the Smart Bus Credits, which were adopted at the last meeting. In that particular motion, the amount of the transfer credits had two numbers transposed. While the motion read $406,572.76, the correct number was $460,572.76. The motion needs to be remade to ensure it is correct for both our records and Smart's records. Anybody have any questions on that? Are there any motions?
Yes, Madam Chair. Trustee Nevers, I'll make the motion to authorize Supervisor Dunn to transfer the accumulated Smart Credits of $460,572.76 back to Smart for reimbursement to the Richmond Lennox EMS Ambulance Authority for transportation services for Macomb Township residents. In addition, authorize the supervisor to enter into the 20,021 contract with Smart for transportation services for Macomb Township residents.
Motion by Ms. Nevers?
Support by Oliver.
Okay. Motion by Ms. Nevers. Who was the second?
Clerk Posey.
Clerk Posey. Seconded by Ms. Posey to make the correction as indicated and to sign the agreement for the Smart contract for the coming year. Ms. Posey, would you call the roll?
Yes, Madam Chair. Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes. Trustee Bassano?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Treasurer Goodhue?
Yes.
And Supervisor Dunn?
Yes. Thank you. This motion carries. Next, we have reconsideration of the Conflict of Interest Policy. This item was tabled to a date certain at the last Board of Trustees meeting to this meeting tonight. Some trustees wanted more time to review the policy and compare it to the previous ones. Mr. Sardi is satisfied with his verbiage in this policy. And did you have anything to add to that, Mr. Sardi?
No, Madam Supervisor. That's fine. All the board members received another copy as well as the Conflict of Interest, or excuse me, the Ethics Ordinance for review.
Yes, Madam Chair. I'm sorry, Madam Chair. This is Trustee Smith. I made the motion to have it payable till tonight's meeting. I did have the opportunity to go over the Conflict of Interest Policy along with the Ethic Ordinance. The policies can be changed. We can review a policy again six months, seven months down the road, correct?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you very much. Because I think there might be a couple issues. Do we have a signed Ethic Ordinance at this point? The one I got was not signed. No, not yet? Is that, Ms. Smith, are you? Yeah, I guess I'll ask Mr. Sardi. Mr. Sardi, do we have a signed Ethic Ordinance yet? The one I have isn't signed by the supervisor. Are you making that as a?
It's been included in the Code of Ordinances as well.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I would just like to indicate that I concur with Mr. Cusamano's comments, and I have similar concerns with the Conflict of Interest Policy with the Ethics Ordinance, but that's just my feelings on the issue.
So... What is your pleasure?
Madam Chair, this is Trustee Nevers. Are you looking for a motion?
I am.
Or just further discussion?
Either.
Okay. I will make a, pardon me?
Either.
Oh, okay. I will make the motion to approve the Conflict of Interest Policy as submitted.
Motion by Ms. Nevers?
Supported by Treasurer Goodhue.
Seconded by Ms. Goodhue to adopt the Conflict of Interest Policy. Ms. Posey, would you call the roll?
Yes, Madam Supervisor. Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Treasurer Goodhue?
Yes.
Trustee Bassano?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, no, and Supervisor Dunn?
Yes. That motion carries. Thank you. Under New Business, Water and Sewer Department is asking for Construction Pay Estimate Number 12 for sanitary sewer cleaning, CCTV investigation, Contract Modification Number Four, Mr. Wang.
Thank you, Supervisor Dunn and board members. Tonight, Water and Sewers in front of you is asking that we approve PayCert number 12. This will be payable to Pipe Tech Infrastructure Services in the amount of $40,785.60. Water and Sewers reviewed this as well as engineering, and we are recommending we move forward with this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Wang?
Madam Chair, this is Trustee Smith. I'll make a motion for the Construction Pay Estimate Number 12. Two, one.
Motion by Ms. Smith?
Clerk Posey, seconded.
Seconded by Ms. Posey to approve the Construction Pay Estimate as requested. Ms. Posey, would you call the roll?
Yes, Madam Chair. Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes. Trustee Bassano?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Treasurer Goodhue?
Yes.
And Supervisor Dunn?
Yes. Thank you. This motion carries. Number 11 is Contract Modification Number One for the Country Club Drive Sanitary Sewer Rehab. Mr. Wang?
Thank you again, Supervisor Dunn and board members. Water and Sewers are in front of you tonight, requesting for Contract Mod. Number One for the Country Club Sewer Repair. This will be a slight increase to this contract of $2,700. As we all know, this repair is going on in earnest right now, and we are recommending approval of this increase for the reasons stated in the paperwork presented in your packet. I'm available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Wang? I have one. Mr. Wang, how long do you anticipate this will take to finish up?
Well, all the pipe work is in the ground as of this evening. Obviously, there's a fair amount of work still be done. I anticipate by mid to late October, weather permitting, that this project will be fully restored and sodded, and hopefully, it'll look like we've never been there.
I hope you're correct. Thank you. Any other questions?
Madam Chair, this is Treasurer Goodhue. I make a motion that we approve Contract Modification Number One in the amount of $2,700 for the Country Club Drive Sanitary Sewer Rehabilitation.
Motion by Ms. Goodhue?
Supported by Smith.
Seconded by Ms. Smith to approve the Contract Modification. Ms. Posey, would you call the roll?
Yes, Madam Chair. Treasurer Goodhue?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Bassano?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes, and Supervisor Dunn?
Yes. That motion carries. Number 12 is a Construction Pay Estimate Number One, and I believe this is the same job. This project is, as Mr. Wang said, is under construction right now. So, Mr. Wang, did you have anything to add to this?
Nope, nothing further. This is just PayCert number one. It will be payable to Paymar Enterprises in the amount of $152,948.70 for water and sewer engineering, and I have all reviewed this, and we're recommending we move forward with PayCert number one. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Or motions?
Madam Chair, Clerk Posey will make a motion to approve Construction Pay Estimate Number One, Country Club Drive Sanitary Sewer Rehabilitation Project 0249-0169. Paymar Enterprises Incorporated in the amount of $152,948.70.
Motion by Ms. Posey?
Supported by?
Supported by Goodhue.
Seconded by whom?
Ms. Nevers.
Ms. Nevers. To approve the payment of Country Club Drive Sanitary Sewer Rehab Project. Ms. Posey, would you call the roll?
Yes, Madam Chair. Clerk Posey, yes. Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Trustee Bassano?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Treasurer Goodhue?
Yes.
And Supervisor Dunn?
Yes. That motion carries.
Thank you, Board.
Thank you. Engineering Department is requesting your approval to alter grade for parcel number 0819-200-008 and 0819-200-0011. Mr. Van Tiflin?
Yes, Madam Chair, persons board members. This particular piece of property is a vacant piece of property in the southwest corner of what would be Garfield Road in the future and 23 Mile Road. The property owner has requested an alter grade so that he can fill in some general low areas and uneven ground on the property so that it drains properly. They've submitted a plan, have been reviewed by building, engineering, and planning. We are all recommending approval. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Van Tiflin?
Yeah. Trustee Oliver has one quick question.
Okay.
Yeah. Mr. Van Tiflin, how does the water, does the water impact runoff? Does it impact any of the surrounding neighbors?
No, Mr. Oliver. The plan shows that there was some storm drainage provided from the Westminster subdivision, which is adjacent. There are a couple of end sections that take the water from that property currently. The rest of the site drains to the east across what would be Garfield Road when that's constructed to the county drain to the east. So there's a little bit that goes to the south into the subdivision. Generally, I would say the majority of it heads to the east to the county drain, so it would not impact any of the adjacent property owners.
That's good. So all the water is collected and funneled into drain?
Yeah. That is correct. When Garfield goes in, it will accommodate the water coming from the property, and then when the property does develop, it will, you know, provide its own onsite detention and will probably outlet to the county drain on the other side of Garfield.
Thank you. No further questions.
Any other questions? Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, this is Trustee Smith. I'll make the motion to request to approve alter grade for parcel number 08-19-200-008
Thank you. Motion by Ms. Smith?
Supported by Goodhue.
Seconded by Ms. Goodhue to approve this request. Ms. Posey, would you call the roll?
Yes, Madam Chair. Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Treasurer Goodhue?
Yes.
Trustee Bassano?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes, and Supervisor Dunn?
Yes. This motion carries. Thank you. Under Human Resources Department, we have a request to advance employee from probationary status. The employee number is 2725. Mr. Sardi?
Madam Chair, members of the Board, this is a request for authorization to advance employee number 2725 from probationary status. He was hired on March 30th, 2020. Under the terms of the collective bargaining agreement to which he's a member, he has a probationary period of 180 consecutive calendar days. If approved, the last day of the probationary period would be September 25th with a seniority date of September 26th. We've checked with the Township Supervisor, which this employee reports, and has been very impressed with the employee's performance. So with that, I'm asking for a motion to approve advancement of employee 2725 from probationary status effective September 26th upon full completion of the probationary period, and I will be happy to answer any questions anyone has.
Thank you. Any questions on this request?
Madam Chair, I don't have a question. This is Clerk Posey. I would just like to indicate that I've had the opportunity to work with this individual on both the Board of Trustees and another board that I sit on, and he's done a fantastic job, and I think he's a great asset to the township.
Thank you. I agree. Anyone else?
Hearing none, Madam Supervisor. Treasurer Goodhue?
Approve the advancement of EE number 2725 from probationary status effective September 26th, 2020.
Motion by Ms. Posey?
Supported by Goodhue.
Seconded by Ms. Goodhue to approve this advancement of employee 2725. Seconded by Ms. Goodhue to approve this advancement of employee 2725. Ms. Posey, would you call the roll?
Yes, Madam Chair. Clerk Posey, yes. Treasurer Goodhue?
Yes.
Trustee Bassano?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
And Supervisor Dunn?
Yes. That motion carries. Next, we have authorization to extend an offer of employment for an election coordinator. Mr. Sardi?
Madam Chair and members of the board, the Human Resources Department received 16 applications for the position of election coordinator after the Board of Trustees authorized us to begin the recruitment process for that position. Four candidates were invited to interview with the selection committee on September 14th, and the selection committee of Supervisor Dunn, Clerk Posey, Charles Pierce, Mickey Todd, and Megan Young are recommending Edward Carey III for hire. So, with that, we'd ask for a motion to approve Edward Carey III for hire contingent upon a successful completion of post offer pre-hire requirements with an effective date on or after October 12th, 2020.
Thank you. Any questions on this?
Madam Chair, this is Trustee Smith. I will make the motion to authorize and extend an offer of employment as the election coordinator full-time to Ed Carey III.
Thank you. Motion by Ms. Smith?
Seconded by Clerk Posey.
Seconded by Clerk Posey to approve Edward Carey III for hire contingent upon successful completion of the post offer pre-hire requirements with the effective date of hire on or after October 12th, 2020. Ms. Posey, would you call the roll?
Yes, Madam Chair. Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes. Trustee Bassano?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Treasurer Goodhue?
Yes.
And Supervisor Dunn?
Yes. That motion carries. The add-on is next, and that is authorization to extend offer of employment for a building inspector. Mr. Sardi?
Madam Chair, members of the board, the Human Resources Department received 15 applications for the position of building inspector after the Board of Trustees authorized our department to recruit for that position. Eight candidates were invited to interview with the selection committee on September 15th and the 18th. The selection committees consisting of Supervisor Dunn, Building Official Joe Maples, and Michael Badamo are recommending the candidate for hire as Jason Stein. So, with that, we ask for a motion approving Jason Stein for the position of building inspector contingent upon successful completion of post offer pre-hire requirements with an effective date on or after October 12th, 2020.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Sardi? Are there any motions?
Yes. Madam Chair, I would like to make the motion to approve Jason Stein for the position of building inspector contingent upon successful completion of a post offer pre-hire physical examination, drug and alcohol screening, background check, and physiological examination, excuse me, psychological examination, pardon me. The effective date of hire will be on or after October 12th, 2020.
Thank you. Motion by Ms. Nevers?
Support by-
Support by Goodhue.
Seconded by Ms. Goodhue to extend the offer of employment per the recommendation of the interview panel. Ms. Posey, would you call the roll?
Yes, Madam Chair. I just, someone repeat who seconded the motion?
Goodhue.
Thank you.
Yes. Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Treasurer Goodhue?
Yes.
Trustee Bassano?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes, and Supervisor Dunn?
Yes. This motion carries. Next, we have planning and zoning, and this is a request to revise temporary outdoor dining area application. Mr. Buck?
Thank you, Madam Chair. On June 10th of this year, the board approved a process to allow outdoor dining to help local businesses deal with the restrictions from COVID-19 that are outlined in multiple executive orders. We have several restaurants taking advantage of this opportunity and a few others that have inquired and either started or have decided to take advantage. We are now have business, we now have businesses other than restaurants seeking some relief from the numerous and rigorous requirements imposed by the governor that are starting to become financially burdensome. For example, we have been approached by a few medical facilities that would like to set up tents to conduct drive-up testing for COVID. This would allow the facilities to keep potentially affected patients away from those who are seeking routine office visits. By modifying the existing application to accommodate other businesses, we can speed up the approval process for all business types. Additionally, the previous application was set to expire on October 30th. Given the continued uncertainty of the current situation, we would ask that these potential outdoor facilities be allowed to conduct business in this manner until April 1st or until the board feels that the special outdoor facilities are no longer needed.
Thank you. Any of the board members have questions? Are there any motions?
Madam Chair, this is Trustee Smith. I will make that motion to revise the temporary outdoor dining area application.
Motion by Ms. Smith?
Supported by Trustee Nevers?
Seconded by Ms. Nevers to revise the application as recommended. Ms. Posey, would you call the roll?
Yes, Madam Chair. Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Trustee Bassano?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Treasurer Goodhue?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes, and Supervisor Dunn?
Yes. This motion carries. Next is a revised application fee schedule. Mr. Buck?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The planning and zoning department has a number of applications that are used by both developers and homeowners for things such as site plans or requests for variances for things like locations of pools or sheds or rezoning requests. The fee schedule for these applications has not been revised since 2006. And in addition to possibly outdated fees, we also have a few new items such as a conditional rezoning that was recently approved by the board, but we have not yet established a fee to be adopted by our fee schedule. The planning department did a thorough review of the costs that we incur reviewing these applications. These include costs from internal review as well as some reviews from our planning consultants. Additionally, we did a review of some of our neighboring townships as well as a number of like communities around southeast Michigan. With this information, we have proposed a set of fees that we also compare to our existing fees to ensure that they're as accurate and fair as possible. At this time, we're seeking a motion to approve the updated fee schedule.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Buck? Are there any motions?
Madam Chair, this is Clerk Posey. I'll make a motion to approve the application fee schedule as presented.
Motion by Ms. Posey?
Support by Smith.
Supported by Ms. Smith to revise the application fee schedule as recommended. Ms. Posey, would you call the roll?
Yes, Madam Chair. Clerk Posey, yes. Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Trustee Bassano?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Treasurer Goodhue?
Yes.
And Supervisor Dunn?
Yes. That motion carries. Next, from the Supervisor's Office is the approval of the equal employment opportunity. Mr. Sardi?
Madam Chair, members of the board, this is a revised equal employment opportunity policy for the township. We've updated the policy to, with regard to the specific groups to which discrimination is prohibited to match the current listing of those groups by case law, and we've expanded a little bit the scope and the dissemination and implementation of the policy. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions on this equal employment opportunity policy?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve the equal employment opportunity policy as presented.
Motion by Ms. Goodhue. Supported by Nevers. Seconded by Ms. Nevers to approve the equal employment opportunity policy. Ms. Posey, would you call the roll?
Yes, Madam Chair. Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Treasurer Goodhue?
Yes.
Trustee Bassano?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes, and Supervisor Dunn?
Yes. That motion carries. Number 20 has been postponed, and that leaves us with the Treasurer's Office, approval of bid for printing of tax bills. Ms. Goodhue?
Yes, Madam Chair. Requests for bids for the printing and mailing of tax bills went out on August 20th with a due date of September 3rd, 2020. Nine bids were received and opened on September 4th. The lowest bid was from LaserCom LLC for $119,462 with two-year extensions. These were all processed in compliance with the purchasing policy. So, at this time, I would like to ask approval of the award for the printing and mailing of tax bills to LaserCom LLC.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Goodhue? Any motions?
Yes, Madam Chair. I make the motion to request approv, pardon me? Oh, okay. To request approval of the award for the printing and mailing of tax bills to LaserCom LLC in the amount of $119,462 with a two-year extension.
Motion by, I believe, Ms. Nevers?
Support by Goodhue.
Seconded by Ms. Goodhue to approve this request for printing of the tax bills. Ms. Posey, would you call the roll?
Yes, Madam Supervisor. Trustee Nevers?
Yes.
Treasurer Goodhue?
Yes.
Trustee Bassano?
Yes.
Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Trustee Smith?
Yes.
Clerk Posey, yes, and Supervisor Dunn?
Yes. That motion carries. We will move on now to board comments. We'll do the trustees' comments first. Ms. Smith?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have nothing further to add, excuse me. Thank you.
Mr. Bassano?
Madam Chair, the only comment I have tonight is I want to wish firefighter Joseph Warren good luck on his walk. I will not be able to be there when he sends off because of my other professional duties, but I just want to wish him good luck on a great cause.
Thank you for that. Ms. Nevers?
I have no further comments tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Oliver?
Yeah, just to follow up on Mr. Warren's walk, again, thank you for doing this. Mr. Warren, that's a 140-mile walk, and just so the residents know, Mr. Warren will be in full firefighting gear, which is approximately 90 pounds. It's a great cause. I urge the residents to go to his website and help donate. Again, thank you, Mr. Warren, and good luck and be careful on the road. That's one thing. Another thing I just want to mention is that not all the schools have school buses running, but some of them do. So, I want, just like to note that people need to be aware of school buses and red blinking lights, and that means you stop and let the children either on or off. I've seen some videos that were very disturbing to me recently. I don't know where they were or exactly when they were, but they're very disturbing, children getting off of buses and cars going around the bus. So, just be careful. Thank you, and that's all I got.
Thank you. Treasurer's comments?
Yes, September 14th was the last day to collect taxes without, the summer taxes without penalties. And normally, we have long lines, and this year, we had the extra challenge of people having to check in before they came into the offices due to COVID. I just want to thank the cooperation of the residents and also thank the ladies that helped check people in and help things move right along. It was greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Clerk's comments?
Thanks, Madam Chair. I just have a few things. First, I'd like to tell you, I'd like to tell everybody how impressed I was with the qualified candidates that applied for the election coordinator position, and I know our building director felt the same way about the candidates that applied for the building inspector. You know, a lot of our concerns from time to time has been with some of the negative publicity we received. Are we going to lose good qualified candidates? And that proved to be wrong. We have great candidates. I believe our wage scale that we pay our employees is a good, is a great pay scale, and it increases our ability to recruit qualified candidates. So, I just wanted to say I was really impressed with the candidates. It's a great place to work, and that showed with the people that interviewed for the position. Next, I just want to indicate that tomorrow, Thursday, September 24th, is the 40th day before the November 3rd, 2020 election. That's a critical deadline for clerks because under the Michigan Constitution, starting on the 24th, voters have the right to apply for and be issued absentee voter ballots in person, and voters who have applied for an absentee voter ballot prior to the 24th have the right to be sent the ballot. That required my office to process and stuff and be ready to mail out 23,882 ballots, and I am extremely proud to say that we mailed ours out one day prior to the critical deadline, and we were the first community to deliver our ballots to the post office today. So, our voters will get their ballots in the next few days. They have been mailed out. And I'd also like to remind them that we're strongly encouraging that they return their ballots by one of our drive-up ballot drop boxes and to not be alarmed when they see a postage stamp on the return envelope. a postage stamp on the return envelope because the state of Michigan required us to do that. We still encourage you to use the drop boxes as we cannot guarantee the turnaround for the ballots delivered in the mail. Other than that, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Under Supervisor's comments, a couple of you stole my piece that I was going to say, but I'll just reiterate, Trustee Oliver's recommendation about Mr. Warren, who is walking all the way to the Grand Rapids area. I witnessed this last year about this time, and he was a very tired gentleman when he got back, but it was certainly well worth it. So good luck, Joe. I will see you tomorrow morning for a big send-off. The other thing was what Ms. Posey said about the candidates that we interviewed, not only for her, but for the building inspector, also for some very good candidates. I think we got the best of them. Hang on just a second here. All right. All right. Last Saturday, the Historical Commission held a book signing for the photo book that Ms. Linda Osborne-Sinewa had put together. This was held at the former Wade Nursery property. Hello? I'm here. This is Trustee Smith. Passed around were priceless. Thank you, and that's all I have. What?
For some reason, you lost it. I would maybe we said this.
Hang on just a second. What?
This is Charlie. Did anyone hear Janet's last comments?
No. No, Charlie.
Yeah. Something happened here.
Oh.
I'm going to get her started back again, okay? Just give me one second.
Okay. Ready?
Okay, here's Janet now, Ben.
All right. Sponsored by the McComb Township Historical Commission, a photo book of McComb Township's early days has been compiled by Linda Osborne-Sinewa. On Saturday, this past Saturday, at the former Wade Nursery property, there was a book release in conjunction with an open house to view the original town hall. I especially want to thank Peggy Arcato, the Chair of the Historical Commission, and all of the members who have worked together to bring some old stuff to some younger people for a glimpse into our history. The crew from Facilities and Grounds Department did an outstanding job on the old town hall and the museum. If you have any pallets sitting in your garage and don't know what to do with them, come take a look at the pallet wall. Very, very unique. I want to thank everyone who attended, young, old, and in between. A very special day because, number one, it was a good turnout; number two, the weather was gorgeous to be outside; and number three, and most important, the stories that were passed around were priceless. Thank you. That's all I have, and that also concludes the business for this evening. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Madam Chair, this is Trustee Smith. I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Motion by Ms. Smith?
Support by Goodhue.
Seconded by?
Posey.
Ms. Posey to adjourn. Would you please call the roll?
Yes, Madam Supervisor. Trustee Smith?
Yeah.
Clerk Posey, yes. Trustee Busenow?
Yes.
Trustee Nevers? Trustee Nevers? We may have lost her. Trustee Oliver?
Yes.
Treasurer Goodhue?
Yes.
And Supervisor Dunn?
Yes.
Thank you very much. That motion carries, and we are adjourned.